To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Following school committee members and student reports, school committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee, Mr. Stevens.
Resource Committee met on Wednesday, August 3rd. We approved the draft of the minutes. We had a number of grants to submit and a number of grants to accept and some donations to accept. Eva Kelly went over enrollment, chapter 70 school update by Mr. Roach, the proposal to add a crossing guard in Memorial Middle School to address safety concerns, and also adjust the prevailing wage to fourteen fifty an hour for the crossing guards and possibly approve a new crossing guard. Proposal to add a twelve-month clerical role to support the new director of data enrollment position. We had a request to adjust the athletic budget from Mr. Antachi and to increase the hourly wage for the extracurricular game supervision by Mr. Tumley, which hadn't been done for some time. And I think we've adjusted that athletic budget, Mr. Jokula.
We have to still finalize that through Resource.
Bye, finalize.
That it, Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, moving on to school building needs. Mr. Stevens, once again.
School building needs, we've been, all summer, we have been informed by administration about the relocation that was going on and going well, and I think we've hit most of it. We had a few furniture problems, but for the most part, administration kept us well updated on what was taking place with the movement of the students in the classrooms. The, a lot of capital improvements being done this summer by school building maintenance. There are many, I won't, I won't list them all, but there are many repairs made to playgrounds throughout the school system, cleaning of weeds and power washing and just the cleaning up in general. We're looking at the upper field at Memorial to get back in order, the gym floors being refinished, carpeting in the music rooms and bedrooms at Long Joe and the gym floor refinished, fire alarm issue in North Building at the South Street School taken care of. Long Joe accelerator repairs, windows, door projects financed by MSBA, three point three million, and our city council approved the remainder, one point five million. Surveillance upgrade in our schools, phone system upgrade, solar upgrades, projects taking place, kitchen upgrades throughout the system, and Crocker Field Conservation Committee approved July 5th, the Yale Development bid for late fall to potentially start work upon completion of spring twenty-two, twenty-three athletic season. So with, that's a long list.
Okay.
Our maintenance was very busy.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Knight.
Welcome, everyone, back from your nice long summer break. Mr. Stevens, thank you so much for that update that you gave us. I heard some wonderful things. You talk about updates at Goodrich and some furnitures over at Long John School. I specifically would like to ask if Goodrich Academy did receive those new desks that Principal Alexis Curry had asked for. She, you know, there was a carpet that was there, you know, that was, you know, not a health hazard and so forth, and I'm just, you know, trying to double-check on that. I plan to go in and visit all the schools, and I just wanted to make sure that she did receive these important things. And what about the, we had talked about the walls over at Long John, did they get painted? I heard you said about windows and so forth.
Yes, there were, many, I'm not sure if I have that on my list, they.
Just want the school to be the best for our students.
They have done many, many projects throughout the city, power washing windows and buildings. Yeah.
Wonderful. Yes, wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Stevens.
They'd be.
I mean, specifically at Goodrich, they have received twenty new tables that are designed for two students each.
Those are for students?
Yep, and then.
What about the main offices where I was, that's fine, I'm pretty sure they need it, but the main office was in the need of some furniture. They had some furniture from the eighteen hundred, I mean, you know, we just want to make sure, you know, our students feel comfortable.
The, most of the conversations I've had about furniture, well, all of them really, with Principal Curry have been about student desks and chairs, but I'll ask her about the desks for the offices, whether it's her office or Deb Jones' office.
Yes, it is her office, and I was over there a couple months ago, and I saw them, and, you know, you know, we talked about that, and I did mention that I was going to come back and say something, and I shared that at one of the meetings, and we were going to look into.
Teacher desk for?
The main office, the main office, the way she has it set up, you know, they're very creative.
What we call teacher's desk or secretarial desk?
Yes, 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 and a table for when the parents come in, they can meet and sit comfortably, because they had some very, very poor-looking furniture there, and, you know, I like to do the, you know, the best I can.
Oh, me too.
All for the students. A pleasant environment is always very wonderful to acquire new knowledge, so we want to see some more of that, if that's, you know.
Mr. Roach is going to be scheduling a resource and building needs meeting very soon.
Yeah.
And we will discuss that.
For sure.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, Policy Committee, Mr. Horgan.
Nothing new to report at this time. We're meeting next Monday, so I'll have something to report at the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Student Support, Dr. Knight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much, once again. First of all, I would like to congratulate all the new teachers that were hired for this academic school year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, the new administrators, and congratulate them and welcome them to the Fitchburg Public Schools, and thanking them for selecting Fitchburg for their place of employment. And certainly, I want to thank the teachers that are returning, the administrators that are returning, and thank them for the job that they do, because, as I mentioned at the new teachers' meeting, the twenty-twenty lockdown left some serious side effect in our communities, you know, to, in the community and also in the school system with our students. Social and emotionally, our students are affected, were affected by that. Academically, they were also affected. Also, behavior, in their behavior was also affected. So everything that the teachers are doing, I want to say thank you, and let's continue to do so. I myself am a person that believe that I can always do ten percent better at everything that I do, and I am committed to do ten percent better. I did mention at the meeting, however, that I was a little bit disappointed, even though I know how hard it is, and I certainly want to congratulate our leadership superintendent, Jokula, Assistant Superintendent Thompson, for the hard work that they do on all the administrators, but I was a little disappointed, because we do have in Fitchburg seventy-six percent of students of color, and I believe I only saw about five new teachers of color, if I saw correctly, at the meeting, and our students, they need a better representation, and so let's do the best we can. I mean, I'm not accusing anyone of anything. Let's just do that ten percent more, and let's try to do so, because studies, I keep getting exposed to studies that are saying that when students are exposed to role models that look like them, that sound like them, that talk like them, they become better problem solvers. And problem-solving was an area where our students were struggling during the standardized assessment. So we, again, let's all pull together. I mean, I am committed to the one thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-four people that went to the poll and voted for me to do this, so I want to make sure I do the best I can. I said at the meeting, and I will do so, and I hope I can do so without having to announce that I'm coming in. I want to go to all the schools, because I am, I am a leader that looks like the seventy-six percent of the students, sound like them and talk like many of them, so I want them to see me more, because if this is, if my presence in the school is going to, you know, help them become better problem solvers, become more creative, and, you know, have a desire to go to college and remain there. And I know we do have some extraordinary students that had, you know, come through the Fitchburg Public School System and, you know, gone to Harvard and, you know, very good universities. I'm very happy about that, but I want to be able to do more. So I'm saying to the principals, I'm going to stop by, not because I'm coming to spy on anyone or to do anything, but I just want my presence to be noticed. I want the students to see me more. Hey, if that woman that have an accent from Panama, if she could do it, I can do it too, you know? I can do it too. So let's do the best we can. I did ask some questions before, with all due respect. I asked some questions, and I don't always get all the answers to the questions. I get some answers, you know, but there are things that I would like to see. I've been exposed to a lot of colleagues, you know, at the university, I'm a full-time student, and they, I'm finding out that in districts, and just, I'm almost done, in districts that are smaller than the Fitchburg Public School District, that's less diverse than the Fitchburg Public School District, they have district-wide positions such as Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion to meet the needs of the population that we have here. And I don't think we do have a position like this in Fitchburg Public School. Some schools are calling it Dean of Culture and Climate, you know, to be able to meet the needs of the students. If we don't have one, can this be something that we can institute in our school? And it's, again, student support, that's why I'm saying this, so that we can be able to meet the need of the students here in our district, so that they can be successful. Remember, our children are going to be the men and women of tomorrow. We need to do the best we can to position them so that they can be successful. That's all I am, you know, I'm asking for. Also, some schools, not some schools, most schools or many schools have a mentoring program, you know, to recruit, to hire, and to retain educators of color to meet that need. I don't think we have one. I know we, I heard we have some mentors, but that's why I said I asked questions, and I'm not getting all the answers. I know everyone is busy, I know. I was an international athlete, I tend to move fast. Please bear with me in that respect. But here I am, you know, asking, we need to do ten percent better to help our students. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. Superintendent.
Yeah, so, Doc Knight, I'd just like to address a couple of comments, because I think there's tonight, for sure, one action item that addresses your concern.
Thank you, sir.
Number twenty-two dash one eighty-six, number twenty-two, twenty-three, we're recommending approval of a grant to accept twenty-five thousand dollars. This is Phase Two of the TNTP Talent Landscape Analysis. That was Phase One, and shortly, I'll be scheduling a Personnel Subcommittee Meeting to present an abridged version. There are about sixty slides in the original findings, and try to make it something that's kind of more concise for the Personnel Subcommittee to digest, but also to talk about Phase Two, which is about implementing systems to help us attract more diverse candidates. You know, we too share in your goal of being, I don't know, we haven't said any good number numerical goal, but last year, end of year, when I say last year, I mean June of twenty-two versus, or twenty-one versus June of twenty-two, we've had very small changes in our overall, you know, mix of diverse staff across the district and across bargaining units. You know, we can present a more formal update in October, once we know the full hiring for this, this year. You made some comments based on visual observation, so we can, we can look at the data then, but it is, it is a common goal for us to hire staff that are more reflective of our students, and again, clearly, the studies have shown that students who see teachers of affinity perform better. So that is aligned with, with what you're looking for.
Thank you, Superintendent. One other thing.
And can I just continue on?
Okay.
The mentoring program, this year, we have a new person leading the in-district mentoring program. We're also expanding the mentoring program, and we're also starting a teacher leadership academy that's being led by, well, facilitated by Cary Purcella Focus Schools, and that was originally targeting fifteen teachers. We expanded it to twenty-five, and actually, now we're opening it up to anybody who's interested. So we'll have, again, it's an opportunity for all our teachers to participate, so.
Okay.
Is there anything else? John, you want to add?
I just wanted to say one, one last thing. There were two administrators at the high school, okay? I did not speak to them about anything that were of color. I just want to make sure that they are going to be participating in this mentoring program, because we want to retain these administrators at the high school. There were two that I knew of, you know. Are they still with us?
Well, I don't know if the administrators are mentors themselves. Usually, the mentoring program is based on teachers who are mentors.
So who mentors the administrators? Because we are trying to retain these people.
So that's where, with the TNTP program, I'm in the process of identifying people at the schools, and I can tell you that one of the administrators at Fitchburg High School is interested in participating in this TNTP group. So as we go into Phase Two, she's part of the team, so to speak, so, so that's starting to happen. So this is kind of a slow build-out of, you know, with the redistricting, re-establishment relationships with people who are on various equity-like teams at the various schools. So trying to pull them in and find people who want to be interested in facilitating that goal, which is one of our commitments in our strategic plan.
Okay.
I have one brief question. Have you, as a school district, attempted to seek state-level funding for mentoring?
We, so to see state-level funding. So right now, some of our Title II grant money that we get every year supports some of our funding. Title II A. Title II A, yep, that's some of our funding around mentoring.
Yeah.
So we've had a lot of work done over the summer regarding our mentoring program, and we've worked with a group of teachers and addition administrators to actually identify areas where we need to do a better job. So we're going to be implementing some of those changes beginning this year, and actually getting more feedback from the new teachers involved in the program this year on how for us to actually make it better and actually support them better and to keep them here in Fitchburg.
Yes.
So we're going to do that, you know, that, a lot of that two-way communication as we do a little bit of mentoring with our teachers, which we meet with them twice a month, get feedback, is it working, what's missing, how can we improve? So that constant two-way communication and gathering data from them to see if we're meeting their needs is something that we plan on doing this year, which will be, you know, kind of a start to the work that we're going to do, so.
Our students and I, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification. Were Dr. Knight's comments results of a Student Support Committee meeting, or you're wrong?
Yes.
They were, can you, when was that meeting held?
Oh, I didn't, it wasn't a meeting. I went to the New Teachers Orientation. That was last.
Okay.
Last week.
Last Tuesday.
Tuesday.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Rosemary.
School Personnel Committee, I believe we're going to be meeting an executive session following, just prior to the conclusion of this meeting, to discuss personnel matters. So Executive Committee, nothing at this time. Student Representatives.
Today's the first day of school, and everyone is adjusting to our new classes and teachers. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
So Fitchburg High School has returned back to a relative state of normalcy. We're fully in-person, there's no real COVID restrictions anymore. The, I believe the state-level funding for pool testing has run out, so that isn't happening anymore. And there have been some changes, accepted in various ways. One of those pertains to the traffic pattern at Fitchburg High School. I'm not sure if this is a city-level thing, but there have been, within the past few hours, to be honest, complaints about the traffic going into and out of the high school. This morning, it was particularly and unusually bad, and there was a change to how that is being handled. Now, now, parents must drop off their students in sort of a parking lot adjacent to the school instead of going through the loop. So it has led to a considerable uptick in traffic and a considerable increase in commute times to school, causing at least one late bus today, as far as I know.
Why that change? Do we know why we changed that?
Well, I think we're trying to have just an overall better flow of traffic for parent drop-off in schools, and historically, the first day of school is a big parent drop-off day as well.
Yeah.
So one of the things that, we've had reports on all our schools on a day like this, we had a lot of parent drop-offs. Usually, as the school days do continue, we do see a drop-off in the number of parents dropping off or guardians dropping off.
Yeah.
We're hoping, you know, in a week or two, that we'll see the levels kind of return to normal and traffic slow down.
But that change in, in the configuration, is that?
That change was also, I think, because of security and making sure the safety of our students, you know, was, you know, one of our top priorities. So I know that was one of the reasons why that change was made.
Yes, the student's parking spot was, parking lot was moved, and that, that worked perfectly fine, and there was no issues with that. And I do also agree with you that this is partly the effect of the day. If it continues to be a problem.
Have to address that.
Yeah, it may need to be addressed, but today can sort of be ignored. Otherwise, it seems like most of the students are happy. We don't have a lot of teachers that aren't, haven't been hired yet, whereas in the past two years, there's been a lot of teachers who weren't hired. There's been classes full of students that did not have a teacher four weeks into the school year. Right now, there are only three such classes, which is somewhat impressive in a teacher shortage, and all of my teachers, for the most part, were in today except for illness. So I had all, plenty of teachers. I believe Tia had all of her teachers in. So the first day of school went really just as smoothly as any other first day of school, maybe even smoother, to be honest.
Thank you, Frankie. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Stevens.
Are the students seniors taking advantage of the parking, the paint?
Yeah, I painted my spot already.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I painted it.
Are they doing that?
Yeah, I'm a senior, so there was a whole day last Friday. We all went out and we painted our parking spots, so now it's a lovely colorful rainbow of parking paint. And you should, like, some of the designs are really quite intricate. There was a little mist thing, people make album covers, Disney Channel logos, smiley faces, all sorts of things. It's very, it's quite cool to look at if you're ever down there.
I'm gonna have to take a ride through in the evening, so then when the guys are parked there. Oh, thank you.
You'll know mine when you see it.
[laughing]
Not very good.
All set.
All set.
Any questions? Seeing then, moving on, approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve. Motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Is unanimous. Thank you. Communications, unless you have any, Superintendent, public comment? Anybody in the wishing? I don't see anybody in the audience, so is there someone who's?
No one has virtually tuned in.
Okay.
Nope.
Moving on, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With your permission, I'd like to go a little bit out of sequence tonight. I'd like to talk about the opening day and redistricting at the end, as we have some guests with us, not only in person, but also virtually. And I'd like to start with the Crocker Elementary School project update. Tonight, we have John Bates of Colliers Project Managers. He's with us virtually to give the school committee and the community a summary of where we're at and what some next steps are. So, John, can you hear us?
I can, yes, thank you, Superintendent. If you can hear me okay, I'll proceed. Again, my name is John Bates. I'm with Colliers Project Leaders. We are the owner's project manager for the Crocker Elementary School project, and we'd like to give the committee an update on the status of the project as of today, and this committee recently saw a virtual walkthrough of the design, but tonight, we wanted to specifically focus more on the schedule and the budget. So, starting with the schedule, on my screen, I have some upcoming milestones. So, starting today through September thirteenth, our cost estimators are going to be calculating the estimate of the construction costs for this project based on the ninety percent complete construction drawings, and the architect has their cost estimator, and then we, the OPM, are bringing our independent cost estimator to the table, and we're going to take the average of those two estimates. That's going to be our construction estimate going forward into the bidding. On September sixteenth, we are submitting the ninety percent CDs package to the MSBA for their final review, which is substantial milestone. And on October twenty-first, we will be completing the one hundred percent construction document package, which will essentially become our bid documents that we will take to begin soliciting bids from contractors to construct this, this building. So, that bidding process that I just mentioned will take place from about October twenty-sixth through December sixteenth, just before the end of the year, and on the twenty-first of December, we were hoping to complete our contractor bid review process, and then by the winter of two thousand and twenty-three, the construction process would begin. And I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, have heard about what's going on in our industry, the dramatic inflation that we've been experiencing over these last several months, so I did want to update this committee on what we, as OPMs and construction industry experts, are seeing in the market as of today. In Massachusetts, we're seeing construction professionals, that includes construction managers, cost estimators. They're carrying between seven and nine percent annual escalation for two thousand and twenty-two, which is significant as compared to what's normal. And they do think that's going to drop down next year, hopefully, to down between five to six percent for two thousand and twenty-three. And just to mention a few material pricing impacts that we've been seeing throughout the course of the year, and again, this is just to mention a few, it's not an all-inclusive list, but we've seen roofing, membrane, insulation, electrical equipment, ductile piping, gypsum wallboard, aluminum, structural steel, all the significant costing increases. This is all market-driven and supply train-driven and labor cost-driven, and we're seeing contractors all year padding their bids to protect themselves from potential risk exposure. You know, if they see prices jumping and plummeting, jumping and plummeting, they don't want to react. They don't know what to do, so they are literally padding their bid. And that's something that we've been seeing all year. So, what does that mean for this project? Well, here's a brief overview of the cost estimate history, starting from the project funding agreement, which we call for short the PFA here, and that was executed with the MSBA, that project funding agreement, almost a year ago to the day, I believe, September one of two thousand and twenty-one. At that time, our total project cost was sixty-five million dollars, and twenty-two and a half of that was going to be the city's share, and then the MSBA, with their support, is going to carry forty-two million of that. And then, as we've seen costs go up over the course of this year, on April twenty-second of this year, we did another cost estimate, and our experts are predicting the project cost having gone up to about seventy-two and a half million dollars total, leaving the city now with a balance of just over thirty million, and the MSBA's agreed-upon share wouldn't change in that case. And, and then we did another round of cost estimating in July of twenty-two, and again, it's due to this, this historic inflation that we're seeing, the cost estimate went up again to just over seventy-six million that would be total, and that's entirely driven by the construction costs, and that would leave the city's share of just over thirty-four million. And again, the MSBA does not adjust their amounts after the project funding agreement to reflect any changes in the construction costs that they're seeing in the market. So we do have, as mentioned earlier, another round of cost estimating, our final round coming up in the middle of September, and we will see where we're at at that point. We don't know exactly, but as you can see, through the course of the last year, and again, as a result of the market, the city's share of this project has now increased, and. the market, the city's share of this project has now increased, and that's where we stand as of today. And what I'd like to just share with you briefly is the recommendations for the next steps, and this is what we're frankly recommending to all our clients, not just the city of Pittsburgh. But, you know, we are seeing escalation, potentially slowing down at the end of this year and into next year. However, historically speaking, we do not see construction costs for public projects go down. For that reason, we are advising, and as is the MSBA, to proceed as planned. And we to go into bidding, as we are anticipating doing at the end of this year, and seeing what we do get, hopefully, a good participation on the part of contractors, in a competitive bid environment, and see what type of bids we do get. This is a situation where frankly, timing is of the essence. And so again, our advisement is to proceed as planned and not to let any additional time lapse, because escalation in time equals additional money. So that is my brief presentation on the status of the project, and I'm very happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Thank you. I might want to mention to the committee that the council will be taking up the loan order appropriations for both the library and the school, Crocker School, on the 14th of September. And as was stated, on the next steps, I think it's important for us to stay the course. These projects are aircraft carriers, and it takes miles to turn them. And we're talking about escalating costs that, I hate to be sounding like a defeatist, but are out of our control. They really are. But, so we're gonna live with that, and we're gonna, we're gonna make it work, because that school is important, and so are those other projects. Thank you.
Yes, Superintendent. So prior to the meeting on the 14th, at the September 12th school committee meeting, we'll be making a presentation after a resource subcommittee meeting about pledging or committing $5 million of school choice funding to help the city make this project happen, so.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. It's, you're the ones voting.
Thank you. Okay, this is your section.
Yep. So I guess for the committee members, are there any questions for John Bates of Colliers before we proceed?
Yeah, just quickly, when we talk about, you know, historically, the cost for public construction not going down, you know, this recent spike in the cost is due to the pandemic, and particularly the, or more, you know, specifically the ESAR grants that lifted the demand for it, and the supply wasn't really there. But with the, like you said, the demand increased 5 to 10% from the averages, and the price is certainly not increasing at that level, it's much higher than that. And historically, with the cost going up, I don't think that really, you know, historically there hasn't been that kind of a push in resources for the, for the demand for public construction, especially in this area. So I would just, I have some questions and some doubts of just how much that is, if that's going to recede in the next following years. We have a window to use this money for this project. It's not by the end of this year, it's not by the end of the next year, it's in three years. And I think there's a valid question to ask and to really calculate if it's worth it. I just don't think it's the most obvious answer, obviously. I want to look more into it, but I'm not ready to just, to sign off on that and say, is this cost of this project going to considerably go down in the next few years because the reason that it's gone up has not been, you know, has not been normal? I think that's a valid question, and I think we should go into bidding, but with the $5 million in school choice funding going to this, I think this is, you know, a question that we need to answer and get some more insight on before we sign off on that particular expense for the school choice funding. That's all.
If I may, I'll just note that that's a question that we get almost every day now over the last several months about, is this a transitional phase that we're in? Is this a bubble?
Right.
So to speak, is this something that will sort of burst, or will we see the market prices drop? Unfortunately, none of us, not even the, you know, the best cost estimators out there have a crystal ball. We absolutely don't know with 100% certainty what's going to happen. What we can tell you as OPMs, as we're doing everything we can to monitor the environment out there, and just look at the history and look at the data that we have at hand, everything is telling us, all the experts are telling us, to keep pushing forward and don't gamble on, you know, the event that this might be a temporary sort of blip. It's, you know, I, there's no, again, there's no crystal ball and no easy answer to this.
Right.
And believe me, as your city's consultant, you know, if we thought it would be in the city's best interest to wait and see if something were to change, we would tell you to do that. But every indication we've been given all year is that this is not something that's just going to improve. It's, it might slow down, you know, the escalation might slow down, it could even plateau, but again, historically speaking, we don't see public construction dropping as a, so that's what I can tell you.
Appreciate the feedback.
Of course.
Okay. All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, next, I'd like to invite a couple people who are instrumental in running our summer programs for our students. If you're gonna come up both together and maybe just go one by one. Jen Fisher, who's our arts director, and Dave Semenza, who's our nutrition services director. So I don't know if you've decided on who wants to go first, or is there a coin toss?
We're gonna let me go first, thanks, Steve. Well, good evening, everyone. Great first day back to school, it was so exciting to see all the kids and parents taking pictures as I was driving to the different schools with their kids with their new outfits on. It's fabulous today. So we had a really busy summer. I want to start with the high school component that we did, Kathy Hytenin.
Jen, can you just, sorry?
Oh, sorry. Is that better?
I don't know if we can get access to show the PowerPoint here, because it's not coming up.
Do you want me to try to share with you again?
No, I have, I just...
Trying to share.
I plugged in the cord, but I can't get it to project onto the screen. Oh, here we go.
So I don't have much of the high school, so I guess I can continue while that loads. Okay. So I was very excited to have Kathy Hytenin put together a really nice summer program for the high school kids. They called it Summer Pursuits. She partnered, she was able to partner with Mass Hire and Youth Works Program to provide paid internships for our students. They took part in a class called Adulting 101. They learned basic sewing skills, just like how to balance a checkbook, what a credit card was all about, how to read your pay stub, which is all the stuff that they need. They had 2D animation, we had an intern camp counselor program, which was really successful. I can talk more about that in a little bit. Oh, yeah, you did it. We had Intro to Industrial Tech, Fine Arts, and Media and Digital Storytelling with a really cool company that came in and did a lot of digital storytelling with the kids. It was fantastic. We also, the high school also offered credit recovery for the students that needed to get some credits to get onto the next grade. So that was one part of the program. I think Kathy had probably between 85 kids every day. We did a, we, she tried a new kind of drop-in program where we had a basketball clinic running that was open to kids in middle school and high school, and that was very popular. We had a lot of students from the middle school level come in and utilize the gym and work on some clinics, basketball clinic stuff and build their skills. It was very well, the kids were coming up on the mart bus and going home on the mart bus. So it's something that we need to look at a little bit more as far as offering some more kind of drop-in activities for the summer, because some of the kids aren't rolling out of bed until 10 o'clock in the morning or later. So we found that those afternoon blocks for the middle school kids was really something that they wanted. She also used, last year, she had a drop-in options for weight training and the open training and like a speed camp, but that wasn't well-attended this year for whatever reason. They did have open gym time, but the high school kids, I think they knew that the 575 kids that I had were up there, they didn't want to be up there with the little kids. So it worked out really well. I was really pleased with the amount of participation from the high school students. They kind of had their own section of the high school, they did their thing. We rarely saw the high school students, only when they were coming in in the morning to sign in. They did their time sheets through Google, a Google form. So Kathy Hytenin did a great job with that program, and she had a phenomenal staff, and it was just good to see my former Long Show kids up there too and doing those classes. It was nice. For my summer program, I wanted to say really thank you to the Pittsburgh High staff. We totally invaded their space for the summer. The clerical staff, the custodians, they were incredible. The nutrition services kind of made it life easier for you guys, a little bit, being there together. They hosted our summer program, they were wonderful. We really appreciated all the help and the assistance while we had things up and running. It was the first time we had that many kids in one space, it was kind of crazy. So that's our thank you for them. I wanted to talk about our academic enrichment. I just want to apologize ahead of time, every time I went to go take pictures of the middle school kids, I got one of these. So they didn't want their pictures taken, so it's mostly the elementary kids. But as you can see by their smiles and all the different activities that they were doing, there was a lot of academ, we were sneaking the academics in this summer, and the teachers did a great job doing all sorts of different activities. You can go to the next slide. I mean, you can just see their smiles on their faces, how much fun they were having, and, you know, they did some painting activities, they did some STEM activities. I, I'm not too tech savvy, so I had a hard time downloading or adding a video to the deck. One of the science teachers from Long Show had this great video, they created bridges out of popsicle sticks, and they took this metal bucket and filled it with sand, and they were weighing to see how much sand could fit in the bucket before the bridge broke. And you can hear the kids cheering as this one bridge, they must have added like 22 pounds of sand into this bucket, and it wasn't breaking, and just the enthusiasm of the kids were like, keep adding, keep adding, and the bridge didn't break. So it was a really good design. So they were learning all about structures and doing all that really cool stuff. So we did a lot of team building. I don't know if you want to go to the next slide, John? We did partner with a couple of outside agencies. This was a group called Jump, Just Understand My Potential, and the teacher is squatting down on the ground, that's Lada. She was bringing the kids out into the, out into the woods. They went up behind Crocker School, up behind Burbank, to that conservation area up there. We were able to bus the kids up there to get them out in the woods. You can see, I took a picture of one of the teachers, that was how we kept the ticks away from the kids. They had these wraps that they, they used something really safe for the kids so that they, we were really worried about ticks this season, because it was so crazy dry. So we had some good protection, and they came up with this really safe system for the kids, but they loved it. They, they just thought that was the greatest thing. And again, we're sneaking in the curriculum, we're sneaking in the science, and sneaking in the kind of environmental science stuff. If you want to go to the next one? We had Mass Audubon come in, and the kids really did a nice job collecting samples from outside and really looking at them and having discussions about different things that were going on. We also, and I didn't get any pictures of these groups, but we had two more groups come in, we had MOC come in, and they did an unbelievable job. Every Wednesday, they came in from 10 to 12, or 12:30, and they had peer mediation services available. And they were able to, you know, if the kids were having trouble, they could sit down and mediate with them, they kind of talked to the kids about how things were going. We kind of had that honeymoon for like two and a half weeks where we didn't really have too many issues, so they really got to know the kids, and hopefully that goes into the schools, because they're still able to provide services, and they'll come work with my after-school program to do some more mediation services. We had UMass Nutrition come in, where they did some unbelievable, like, food planning and what's a healthy meal all about, and they did a great job with them. Oh, here's some of my favorites. Again, the kids, when we went to Miral Lake, middle school kids, they didn't want their pictures taken for some reason, but here we are at Camp Lo. The kids had a great time, they were able to get at least two visits in to go swimming, and it was a really dry summer, so the kids were able to get some swimming in. And they were all well-supervised between our staff and the Y staff, and then they had swimming in the, a chunk of time in the morning, and then they had an afternoon activity out in the fields, and then they had lunch there. So that was, the kids loved that. We did pull off one field trip, we were able to get the kids to Southwick Zoo, the kids loved it. They got to go and really experience the zoo, you can see them looking at the different displays, the different exhibits. And for some of our kids, you know, touching a goat for the first time, it was kind of an experience for them, so they loved that. I'm going to go to the next one, John. This is one of my favorite events, it's kind of crazy, we do this Field Day Party Palooza, where we rent bouncy houses. And when you first drove into the high school, on the left-hand side of the soccer field, you must have had about nine or 10 of them set up, and the kids were going by on the buses, and their heads were like out the window, like, oh my God, what have we got going? They had obstacle courses, they had this big wrecking ball that they could, you know, do activities on, it was a lot of fun. We did tie dye, we had an ice cream truck come, it was on the Tuesday before, Wednesday before the program ended. Monday of that week, we tried to pull off going to Canterbury Lake Park for the whole program. We had it all set up, we had 11 buses, one bus had like 27 coolers in it, we were ready to go, and I kept watching the forecast, oh, it's gonna rain, it's gonna rain, we're gonna make it. They told us, you know, come up, if we, if we're open, if it's raining and we're still open, you gotta come. So we were like, okay, we're gonna come. So we get all the kids up there, they get to the gate, it starts lightening out, we had to cancel for their safety, so back on the buses they went and came back. So Canterbury has been a challenge for us to get everybody to go, so that we might scratch that off the list for next year, but we're gonna negotiate that and talk about that. But the Party Palooza right at home was a great event. The kids loved it, the elementary kids were a little disappointed, because we kept it separate, elementary on one side, and the big kids on the other, because there were more challenging obstacles to do. But they, we had face painting, we had students face painting, we were gonna expand it a little bit more for next year, but the teachers loved it, they thought it was a great event, and it was pretty reasonable between the, Mount Wachusett covered the cost of our ice cream truck, and we had a great barbecue from our nutrition service. We invited the parents to come. Oh, yeah, from, my high school intern program, this was really a great program. We took 15 high school students that wanted to work with kids, and it was between the Pittsburgh High Educators Club and students that might just been like, hey, this is something I want to do. So the first three days before they, we did an orientation, they did 18 hours of orientation with myself and Ashley Erskine, she's a teacher over at Long Show. We talked about everything that we normally do with our teachers. Every Friday, Dr., Professor, I gotta say her name wrong, Angostino and Professor Link, they did a seminar-type of program where they talked about ELL strategies, they talked about, you know, special education strategies, they talked about childhood, child development. So they really, the kids got a really well-rounded, like, if you were going into the education program at any of the state colleges, you'd be pretty much ready to go with an introductory to education. So we're trying to really look at those students that are in that education club, I'm trying to pull them in. I know, Dr. Knight, you were talking about how we're trying to get the kids more involved. So with the after-school program, I'm trying to get these interns to come in and work in the after-school program, so they get that hands-on experience and then kind of mentor them as they go through our program. I look at Mr. Thompson, who started off as a 21st century teacher, and now he's an assistant superintendent. So I think if we can start getting our students involved with our students and our high school students, and really working with them and paying them a wage and give them strong supports, I think we'll have a pretty good pipeline just for Pittsburgh, you know, get them to come back. So it was an incredible summer, and I wanted to thank our central office team, I kind of drove them a little crazy with payroll stuff. And Amanda in HR did a great job, Callie, our grants person, she's amazing. Donna Hildreth, our bus transportation, anything that would come up with busing and routes, and she was just such a huge support, and John and Bob and Mr. Roach, it just, we had a great, a lot of support from central office, so thank you for that. I'll hand it over to Dave, that's my spiel.
I have a couple of slides that I have to work on.
Hold on, I'm, I'm coming.
While you're loading, just a quick question, quick question, Jen. Do you feel it was better for the students and the staff, for everybody to be in one location as to be at several different schools?
Well, the only...
For the first year, probably, was it, it used...
Yeah.
Time to get used to having everybody in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We did the Title I Journeys program for the kids going into first and second grade. If I had my druthers, I would have them go to maybe South Street for next summer if it's available. just because they had their own little wing up on the second floor, and they did a great job. The teachers, you know, they had access to the little playground outside the high school. But the elementary, we kept the middle school kids in one hallway. The elementary kids were in another hallway. A lot of siblings came together, so they rode the bus together. So that worked out really nice, and the parents liked that. But for the little littles, I think, after talking to Mr. Roach, how we're going to do that and what buildings are available for food service, I think it made their life a lot easier. Even having like the start times for the families, because what we did last summer was we had a different start time for the elementary and middle school. The middle school started a little bit earlier than the elementary, so it was that, you know, gave them time to drop off at Memorial and then run over to South Street to drop off if they were parent-drop off. But because we were at the high school, 94% of our kids took the bus. So, because the parents can't get out there. So it was just one of, we'd have to really take a look at that. We're going to start planning probably in December and January to see what really worked best, what buildings are going to be available, how it's going to work out for everybody.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
From a meal service standpoint--
Obviously, we did. No matter where the kids are, the way we manage our meal production is we consolidate as one production kitchen in the summer, which happens at the Pittsburgh High School. So having that many students under one roof, from a production standpoint, it certainly was a little easier from a production standpoint, but we can do them wherever they are. From a meal service standpoint, a quick summer food service recap. So breakfast and lunch, we provided to kids and teens, the teens and under at no charge. A traditional, more of a traditional summer food service program like we would have had prior to the pandemic. The meal service we had been providing under COVID, those waivers were set to expire as of June 30. President Biden did sign into law the Keep Kids Fed Act on June 25th, sort of an 11-hour extension to those waivers. So we had been prepared to revert back to fully COVID-prey summer meal service. And then some flexibilities did get put into place really as of July 1st. What happened to us was we were allowed some flexibilities, which we didn't take advantage of. And what those flexibilities were, certain sites, not all sites, certain sites we were allowed to offer grab-and-go meals. So Coolidge Park, Park Hill, Great Playground, playground, and the Housa Johnson State Pool. Families were allowed to come and pick up meals and take them on-site. Traditionally, summer food service meals must be consumed on-site. Since the pandemic of March 2020, those waivers were put in place that allowed people to take them or what we call non-congruent fee-in, non-congruent fee-in. So the president, like I said, signed into law that flexibility, which we took advantage of which helped a lot of families. Pittsburgh, this past summer, we served over 36,000 meals at no cost. Breakfast and lunches at a combined 16 sites. Very good summer for us. We count summer meals from when school ends until, really, last Friday. We serve meals up until this past Friday at some sites. Primarily, Pittsburgh, we serve meals at Pittsburgh High, obviously, McKay, South Street Early Learning Center, US High Montrose Center, Low Playground, Park Playground, YMCA, just across the street here, Sinefield School, Kids' Day Care Center. We also serve meals in some communities in and around Pittsburgh, which just shows, it's not common to do that for a lot of summer programs. Just shows how well-received our program is. Lenins, we bring meals to the Boys and Girls Club Westminster, CAPS Collaborative, Clinton Park and Recreation gets their meals from us. Clinton has a summer feeding program that their focus will run. Their Park and Recreation gets their meals from us. I guess it speaks to what, how good our program is. And then Lancaster, Camp Lo, we bring meals over to them, so. You know, all--
So public schools, we provide--
We bring, so Clinton Park and Recreation Department sponsors a summer program similar to the park sites here in Pittsburgh. They then receive their meals for their park and rec site from us. So we're bringing meals over to them. Now, it's, you know, we're not bringing 10 meals. It's about 100 meals a day. So we do it. It's bragging rights, I think, because it shows how good a meal we do. We don't do it at any--
That's homemade.
Pittsburgh comes first. Pittsburgh is our primary, is our party.
I just don't understand why they don't have the same setup. Yeah.
Okay, into life. But we have a great relationship with Clinton Park and Rec.
That's good.
And it's a relationship that lasts a while and for, you know, a few days. Thank you. So some pictures from the summer, the cook-up we did for Jen and her group, the upper left, that's my fantastic summer program team from this summer. Again, that group there, about 36,000 meals in a little over eight weeks this summer. Great group. Wouldn't trade for anything. So. So a few quick notes about this coming school year. Breakfast and lunch will continue at no cost to the students here in Pittsburgh. That, so Massachusetts stepped up to the plate. It is one of the handful of states in the country that will be providing meals at no cost. Most states are not continuing with that. Massachusetts is one of them that will. Pittsburgh was going to do that regardless. Pittsburgh participates in the community eligibility provision that allows, or that allows meals to be provided at no cost to students. So regardless if Massachusetts had passed legislation or if they had not passed legislation for this upcoming school year to provide meals at no cost to students, Pittsburgh was still going to do that. There was some rumors about that prior to that. The kids were actively, that wasn't announced. But I give the folks, you know, eating help credit. They stepped up to the plate to make sure kids in Massachusetts were going to have easy access to meals this year. Who goes beyond that, but Pittsburgh is locked into CEP for at least a couple more years. So some exciting things. We're happy that we are returning to even more normalcy. For, you know, Super Diddy Joe and I have had this conversation many times. You know, for the majority of the pandemic, you know, my staff was there, front and center, making sure, you know, families had food available to them, or happy to be sinking back into the background and let the educators shine and do what they do. But, you know, we're happy to be the ones to make sure, you know, the kids have that nutritious meal available every day. You can't learn on empty summer. Breakfast and lunch is available every day for school, for students. We encourage them. Get that breakfast. Get that lunch. Got some exciting things coming up this year. I know we're working on a few exciting promotions, a local day where we're going to feature locally-produced Massachusetts-only items. Some information coming out of that soon. It's going to be great.
Thank you. Nice job. Question, yes, Dr. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say thank you for providing the nutritious-- you use the word nutritious lunch-- for our students here in Pittsburgh at no cost. I do have a question for you. The fruits and vegetables that you're using to make these nutritious meals, are these organic or, you know, this is a whole bunch of stuff that's filled with pesticide? Because these are all our children here in Pittsburgh, and we want them to have the best.
No, they are not organic. There's a requirement by USDA lunch rules to serve organic. There are some occasional moments where we will feature organic. I don't think all of our fruits and vegetables are natural.
Do you have your own garden that you get your vegetables from there, or is this bought--
So you mean located at the schools?
Where are you--
No, you do-- There are certain, there are strict rules and regulations on growing foods to be used in the USDA school nutrition program. We do work closely with our vendors to get as many locally sourced options as we can. But we also have to take into consideration food safety, food security.
Definitely. That's why I'm saying that, because, you know, if you, if it's coming from, I don't know, from where Market Basket gets your fruits and vegetable, you know, that's loaded with pesticide, and that is not--
We don't purchase from Market Basket. So, I mean, our produce vendors have their strict safety requirements and whatnot. They have to follow safety rules and whatnot, you know, for us, so. And by America. We are required by law to only offer fruits, vegetables, and products grown in America unless proven hardship. For example, bananas. There are no, you can't grow bananas--
Hot apple cider?
Or things like that. Sorry, but grapes, for example, have to be grown in America for us to serve.
As long as we do the best we can, right?
Well, I'm never going to Market Basket again. Getting Market Basket, another shot at you.
You too. I meant no harm.
Thank you. Okay.
Hey, are there any other questions for Mrs. Fisher, Mr. Semenza?
Great job by both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, both of you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, now, getting back to opening day, which Tia and Frank gave the student perspective. We're going to talk a little bit about opening day and some of the redistricting actions. And I'll get it started, and Mr. Thompson and Mr. Roach will continue. So again, opening, the start of school for staff really started last week. Last week, we had the teachers come in for two days of professional development back at our schools. Here, we have a picture in the Pittsburgh High School cafeteria, a lot of team-building activities and, you know, looking at the strategic plan and starting to talk about what actions to take this upcoming school year. Again, the next few slides are really just pictures of various schools. Here, we have pictures of staff. And at Pittsburgh High, students at the Long Show Gymnasium. Memorial being greeted by the assistant principal. Over at McKay, the gym filling up. There are a lot more students in the warm gym over there this morning.
Yes.
At Crocker, and also at Pittsburgh High, the excitement of the students arriving. We didn't get you either Frank or Tia here on the camera, the pictures, you know.
There was a lot of pictures to choose from.
There was quite a few pictures. It was quite the day at Pittsburgh High.
So again, here's a picture over at Ryan Gold with, you know, some of the new furniture. And again, students arriving at Long Show, which is now servicing grades six, seven, and eight. So really, here, we have just the final breakdown of how many students and staff are at each of the schools. The South Street Early Learning Center, which starts classes next week, will have about 456 students and 96 staff. Crocker, McKay, and Ryan Gold will all be elementary schools serving grades one through five. Crocker will have about 631 students, 100 staff. McKay, 740 students, 114 staff. And Ryan Gold, 657, with 105 staff. Long Show and Memorial, now the two grade six through eight middle schools, pretty close in terms of enrollment of students. Long Show, just about a little bit more than Memorial, 618 versus 587, and a little bit more staffing at Long Show as well versus Memorial, 118 versus 97. And lastly, the, our largest school is Pittsburgh High School with just shy of 1,300 students and 203 total staff located at Pittsburgh High across all units, all functions, so. And last but not least is Goodrich with just under 160 students and 26 staff.
You know, those staffers are the entire staff, not just--
Yes, that's the entire staff.
Custodians, clerical, paraprofessionals, teachers, everyone in those buildings. That's how many staff we have.
Regardless, a notable ratio. That's really great.
Do we have, may I, do we have an update as to what percent of teachers of color we have in the district, administrators of color in the district? Do we have those figures?
We have the numbers where we ended last school year, which I can provide, well, the Personnel Subcommittee. I have that tabulated, and as I was saying earlier, we can have a final count about October 1 of what teachers we've hired, say, since the end, or the start of this, well, we use fiscal years, which starts July 1 to October 1, which would really give you a better snapshot of what, if any, change there has been since.
So, yes. So when you report these to the Department of Education, do you report these numbers with the, with all the staff, with the custodians and cafeteria workers? Do you report the number that you give to DESI with everybody?
Yeah, so they ask for a specific category. So they'll ask for the number of teachers and administrators. They don't ask for--
That's what I'm looking for, the number--
Custodians.
Not, and not as it pertains to ratios to teacher to student.
People of, people of color, I think they may--
They do.
They have a report. They have a report, yes.
Those are the numbers I'm looking for.
And I think we're going to be able to provide that with you in October, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Because our numbers are due by October 1st by the state, so we'll have that to you in October.
Is that on the report card, too, online? Isn't all those kind of statistics on the--
There are, but it's for previous years.
Previous years, yeah.
I'm talking about this year. Yeah, we want this year.
Before just moving on to Jeremy's portion about school furnishings, just speaking to our principals this afternoon, everything went, you know, off without a hitch. You know, typical first-day issues with, you know, some students, the bus didn't come, or, you know, a couple buses running late, or parents were not at the stop, things like that. But overall, arrival and dismissal were successful. You know, just one anecdotal note from one of our principals at the middle school said that she definitely noticed the difference this year with not having fifth grade there. She said it was, it seemed to be, the students were a lot more ready for school this year at the middle school. You know, kids were, you know, the maturity level was there compared to years past with fifth grade being there. So, you know, anecdotally, the first, you know, first day at the middle school level, it sounds like, hopefully, we had some success with this redistricting there at the middle school level. So I wanted to share that. But overall, pretty good day.
I think this is where we turn the microphone over to Mr. Roach here, so welcome, Mr. Roach.
It was, I mean, I thought it was a great day at Crocker and McKay and Long Show, where I was able to jump in for the first time in 12 years, not at Pittsburgh High. So it was exciting to be with little, the little students and see some of the things. And a lot of the work that has been going on over the course of the summer has been to prepare for the redistricting of schools that have grade configurations one to five, six to eight, and really pre-K and K at South Street. So big investment by the public schools, by the city, in furnishings. You can see sort of the breakdown of the number of chairs and table and desk combinations at each school. I think this project started well into last year, probably discussions about it happening in September of 2021, but certainly, deep into the spring, you know, the purchasing was happening in May. And as we heard a little bit from our representative, the project manager from Colliers, just like everything, furniture is another, school furniture is another area where there are significant lead times to ensure that, you know, you actually receive the items that you would like to have. So you can see a significant order of chairs, 3,361, and a number of 2,000-plus on the table and desk combinations, depending upon the school. I think the great thing in much of what we were able to order was actually manufactured in Worcester. So there was not a great deal of travel time. So most of the chairs were actually at the school sites in July. The table-desk combinations were happening literally up to Friday of last week. The last school delivery was South Street, and you can see, I mean, I'm sorry, Crocker. They had a smaller number of tables and desks. But everything else was being completed those second and third weeks in August. So the green just means it was completed. We were monitoring it with sort of red, yellow, and green throughout the summer, and glad to report that everything was in green as of last-- and glad to report that everything was in green as of last Friday for the start of school today. As we go into, you know, again, the redistricting happened with, with a number of the schools, with the exception really of Pittsburgh High and Goodrich. So, every other school had quite a few folks who were either staying, but also a number that were, were moving. So, you can see the column of external moves. And you see a school like South Street or the Learning Center, obviously, where it is a new configuration with pre-K and K. So, they had 40 folks who were coming from different schools across the district. So, that required a lot of moving because, as we know with teachers, and I was guilty of this as myself, we can be pack rats. You know, we had that great lesson that worked three years ago that you don't want to get rid of. So, there were a lot of boxes that needed to be moved. There was an amazing system developed last year. I think Craig Shalfo and a number of other folks designed that with Diamond Relocation. That was a company that we used this summer. And I can't say enough about the efforts for Diamond. And I was also glad to see that many of the, the folks that they hired this summer were actually recent Pittsburgh High grads. So, they were working throughout the summer, doing all these different moves. And you can see the difference, again, we were able to move everything to the green there in July. They were, they were pretty much done with most of the moves, about 240-plus, 244, to be specific. And then it was a matter of moving furniture, you know, moving the furniture to prepare for the new furniture and make sure also that our sites were appropriate and aesthetically, you know, pleasing for the first day of school. So, that was a lot of moving items into recycling and so forth. So, exciting though, again, that all of it happened in order for us to be ready to go today, to meet the kids for what they deserve, which is their year, you know, it's their year. So, you can see a lot of the furniture was either constructed on-site, assembled on-site, or moved right into staging areas like cafeterias or gymnasiums, whatever was appropriate to the school. You see a couple of items there from Rhine Gold and then also McKay. And then, and this is what it looked like for a lot of our students as they came into their classrooms. They had brand-new desks and tables, brand-new chairs to start, you know, their experience in whatever grade it is. And as we know, you're in first grade or sixth grade or eighth grade, whatever grade wants. And, and it's really exciting to be able to see, you know, our schools being able to provide that type of experience. So, and we're able to do it by August 26th, so that when we had kids come in on the 29th, it was in great shape.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roach. So, just continuing on the agenda, we have the.
No questions about that?
Yes.
Sorry. Coming back to the, the list, to the slide where you show the number of chairs and desks and tables that were purchased for the different school, this is just a question, a friend question. I noticed that on Longs Joe, it's under 100 new chairs. And, you know, the other schools are in hundreds and, you know, McKay, 800. Is there any specific reason why Longs Joe got less new desks? I mean, maybe the year before they had more. I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, on the second bullet there, I know that there was a pretty intensive inventory and audit done in the spring. I even received it as the former principal at Pittsburgh High. And though I put "not applicable" to Pittsburgh High School, they did receive different furniture this year. Just didn't relate to the redistricting. So, with respect to what was actually ordered for chairs and tables, it had to do with their existing supply, the existing inventory that they had. But it also had to do a little bit with depending upon if there was a significant configuration difference. So, for example, like what you see for South Street, a lot of that had to do with now the oldest kids in their school are going to be six years old. And some of the furniture that they had previously with fifth graders and fourth graders, just not, it was too big. You know, so, so with respect to Longs Joe, we are working on some additional ordering of, of some desks and tables. But again, I think a lot of what was ordered was based on that assessment of the current inventory and then what the needs would be moving forward, you know, for the new configuration of grades.
And just to add on really, when Craig Shalfo was principal at Longs Joe, I'll say sometime within the last, well, 10 years, but maybe it's more like eight, Mr. Shalfo requested purchase of desks and chairs. So, that, that was probably the first school to have an upgrade in some of the furniture. And we really did the other schools this time around.
Okay. I'm just looking out for Longs Joe because, you know.
Understood.
Understood.
Yeah, please.
So, to continue or going back to the subject of trying to grow staff and, and hire staff that look like our students, we're trying to put, or we have put together a scholarship program with the funding from the George R. Wallace Foundation in partnership with Pittsburgh State University to create an education pathway whereby our high school students who go into this program can get some scholarship assistance. So, I don't know, Mr. Roach, if you want to just talk about the, the education pathway? And then the next slide is the, the scholarship?
Yeah, I mean, it's been, it's been a multi-year process to develop, I think, what is really an innovative and progressive type of build-your-own-teaching type of, of pathway from, from really, you know, hopefully kindergarten eventually right up through to, you know, after graduation from Pittsburgh State and right back into the Pittsburgh Public School classrooms. You know, you can see how it's taken some time to get to, to where it is now. But, you know, over the last few years, there's been a lot done in conjunction with Pittsburgh State University and being an early college high school, you know, as approved by the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, we now are, have been able to offer students these opportunities to enroll into the Future Educator Academy. They earn credentials in really practical, you know, practical credentials such as CPR. You know, so whether you become a teacher or not, that's just a great thing to know if you're going to be doing some babysitting, if you're going to work with small children. There's a great credential in tutoring that's actually the highest-paid, you know, on-campus job for students who are, who are doing work, study. You know, and then students who are interested in pursuing education can enroll in the early college dual enrollment. They, they earn a minimum of 12 college credits while students at Pittsburgh High. So, you heard even Frank and Tia talking about the courses that they're taking this year. And some of those are dual enrollment credits that are offered through Pittsburgh State. They're all transfer block courses, so they're transferable across the state system, but also to many privates. In addition to that, you know, we have a partnership that Mass Hire helps us with. It's the High School Senior Education Internship Program. Been doing that for a few years now as well. That's part of that. So, students can actually be hired during their experience in, in the school. So, a senior could be working at Rhine Gold during the day, during a free block or right after school. It's really, I think, excited kids about the, the potential of teaching. And, and then really, the, the thing that, you know, Superintendent Jokula has done a great job with is, you know, finding those ways that we can offer scholarships to students to completely remove the barrier of, you know, I can't go to, to college because I can't afford it. You know, we want every student to be able to feel like they can, especially those that are going to go into the education pathway, into education. So, I think the next slide talks a little bit about, you know, we've just launched, I think within the last week, maybe two, the scholarship. Again, the Wallace Foundation is supporting that. And with the partnership with Pittsburgh State, a student who enters into one of their education programs, and it really doesn't matter which one, you know, right, elementary, middle, high school, special ed, ESL, whatever it is, they're a Pittsburgh Public Schools graduate. They're going to have scholarships all four years of their time at Pittsburgh State. Pittsburgh Public Schools will support the first two years. And then Pittsburgh State Endowments and different things that they have will support the junior and senior year. So, it's pretty exciting stuff. We already, we, I think we launched the scholarship last, maybe last Thursday, and we had one application already by Friday. So, it's, and I know the Alumni Association is doing a great deal to support that as well for those first two years and really helping kids. So, again, it's, it's how do we get kids into the classroom? And again, those Pittsburgh Public School graduates, like you said, Dr. Knight, you know, if, if we're looking at our population of students, you know, how can we best serve them? Let's bring our own students into the classrooms in time. And, and that commitment to our city, I think, is even greater, you know, in certain respects with someone who's gone through the schools, gone to Pittsburgh State, then come right back into Pittsburgh Public School. So, it's really, it's pretty exciting to be able to launch this. And I know that it's already being looked at by, by some other districts as a model, you know, that, that they're really interested in doing as well.
Okay, and that brings a conclusion to the superintendent's report. And Mr. Roach, take a pass at the grants here?
Yes, we have, we do have a decent amount of grants, some for acceptance, some to submit and accept. And we do also have two donations. So, I'll start out with the grants that would be the ones to accept. There were three at the beginning, numbers 22-84 to 22-23. The Healthy Schools Program Continuation Grant of $10,000. And that supports mental health programming, physical activity, exercise initiatives, and solutions to chronic conditions that students may be facing. The Open Science Ed Field Test Grant is $33,280. That's going to continue to fund Pittsburgh High School participation in the Open SciEd Field Test Curriculum for Biology and Chemistry. These are significant curriculum units with a great deal of professional development and common assessments that the teachers can use with their students. It's going to be great. The Civics Teaching and Learning Grant of $40,000, which supports civics teaching and learning, including but not limited to the implementation of student-led, nonpartisan civics projects, specifically in grades eight and 12. Then there are a number of federal grants to accept. The Fiscal Year 23 Fund Code 240 IDEA Grant of $1,735,228, which provides funds to ensure eligible students with disabilities receive free and appropriate public ed. That includes special education and related services designed to meet their needs. The Fiscal Year 23 Fund Code Perkins Grant of $71,847 supports career and technical education initiatives at Pittsburgh High School. The FY23 Fund Code 305 Title I Grant, $2,664,864, supports English Language Arts and Math Remediation and Acceleration at all schools. The FY23 Fund Code 140 Title II Grant, which Mr. Thompson mentioned a little bit earlier, $269,997, will fund portion of literacy and math initiatives in addition to mentoring and induction facilitator. The FY23 Fund Code 180 Title III Grant, $145,570, supports English Language learner population. FY23 Fund Code 309 Title IV Grant, $193,606. That initiative, that grant initiative supports well-rounded education opportunities, safe and healthy students, and supports effective use of technology. FY23 Fund Code 645 21st Century Grant, $571,834, provides after-school and summer programming at elementary and middle schools. And then the FY23 Fund Code 244 Enhanced Programming for 21st Century, $40,000, provides additional funds to meet the needs of students with disabilities in after-school and summer programs. There is one grant to submit and accept, and that is the Barr Foundation Driving Towards Diversity in the Educator Workforce Grant. That's $25,000. That is a year-two extension to continue participation in the Barr Foundation research with the New Teacher Project TNT in effort towards developing a more diverse workforce. So, those are the grants. And I don't know if we should pause there and be four donations or continue with donations?
Donations.
Okay. So, we had two donations. They are, there was one for the, from the Rhine Gold Parent Teacher Organization for five picnic tables, which would be placed outside the cafeteria windows. There are four hexagon tables and one ADA hexagon table. That is for $7,705. And then there is a grant for $10,000, I mean, I'm sorry, a donation for $10,000. The funding source is Goodwin, and that is support the Pittsburgh Public School, Pittsburgh State University Teacher Pipeline Scholarship.
Okay.
Okay, make a motion to bundle 22-184 through 22-188.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bundle 22-84 through and including 22-188. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you.
Want to approve the bundle?
Second. Sorry. Motion, motion made to approve the bundle?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you. Next is executive session. We're going to be, we'll take a vote to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters.
Contract negotiation.
And one, one contract negotiation as well.
Yes, Mayor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Yes.
All answers are unanimous.
Okay, we are now in executive session, correct?